Good evening, Chair. Calls to order: Public hearing for Bill 24-034, Zoning Chapter 267, 33 Signs. This is a bill that I initiated after speaking with Planning and Zoning. The bill is to clarify language in the zoning code regarding the number of electronic message boards, freestanding signs, and electronic message board wall signs. Only one are permitted per property, so it's either/or. There was some confusion there, so this cleans that up. Counsel, anyone want to speak to that?
Mr. President.
Mr. Penman.
I appreciate just cleaning up the other bill that we just passed. I support this legislation. In, you know, the years to come, I'd like to enhance it even a little bit more to have electronic permitted, but I think this is a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up, Mr. President.
All right, with no one signed up to speak to Bill 24-034, this will conclude this public hearing. It'll be taken up at a future date. Next is Bill 24-035, Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement with Verizon. Again, this is a agreement that was started by Mr. Kearney before he left, and we appreciate all of his efforts prior to, and then Ms. Allegi picked it up and continued on to bring us this bill tonight. So this bill renews the non-exclusive cable television franchise to Verizon to operate a cable television system in the county and incorporate the terms of the Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement. Under the county code, the county is authorized to grant non-exclusive franchises to operate cable vision systems within the county. In 2009, the council granted a cable TV franchise to Verizon, entered into a 15-year agreement. The agreement is now being renewed, and council has considered the cable need of the county and determined that Verizon is qualified to continue to operate a cable communication system within the county. Therefore, it is in best interest of the county to grant the renewal of the franchise agreement to Verizon. The bill incorporates the terms of the renewal agreement which is attached to the bill. And Ms. Allegi, this is a five-year commitment?
Yes, the renewal, the original term is 16 years, started in 2009. I think renewals are all five years.
Thank you. You need a microphone?
I'm pretty loud.
You are loud, but that's okay.
Never been told that.
Counsel, anyone want to speak to this? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up, Mr. President.
With no one signed up, this will conclude this public hearing for Bill 24-035, and will also be considered at a future meeting. And we're going to take a recess till 7:30. So that was quick. Thank you.
Colors up. Colors halt. Left face.
Ladies, going to have you come forward? It's our pleasure to welcome the girls, the outs from Troop 4250, who are going to lead us in the pledge. Come a little further across. That's good.
Colors present orange.
Whenever you're ready, ladies. Whenever you're ready.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
Colors shoulder orange. Colors order orange.
Pastor Tillman? You need a microphone?
Let us pray. Dear God, we thank you for allowing us to gather on this evening to conduct the business of this council, but more importantly, to honor you for all the many things you've done for us. The mere fact that you woke us up this morning and started us on our way. For last night's warm bed could have been our cooling board this morning. So for this day, we give you thanks. We give you thanks because today is a day we've never seen before and a day we'll never see again, which is why this day is called a present, a gift from you. May we use every moment, every minute, every second of this day to honor you and all that you mean to us, for we were created in the love that you created us. Therefore, may we walk in that same love and generosity to one another. Bless our time together. May be blessed with your presence, and may your Holy Spirit guide us through wisdom that you provided and you provide alone. It's in your most holy and precious name we pray, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Counsel, may I have general consent to move to Items 5A and B on the agenda and return to Item 4 thereafter? Subbing. Thank you. Considerations of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Counsel Appointed Harford TV may have a motion.
Counsel President, I move to approve the new appointment of Claudia Brown.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moving second to approve the new appointment to Harford TV. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Harford Living Treasure, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the nomination of Richard Presbury as Harford Living Treasure.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. It's been moved as second to approve Mr. Presbury as a Harford Living Treasure. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bullsodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Presentation of Proclamations is Agenda Number Four, and before I go any further, Counsel, I would like to welcome a representative from Governor Moore's office, Mayor Edding, Bel Air Commissioners, Delegates Riley, Griffith, and Johnson, Chief Moore from the Bel Air Police Department, Director Ayers from the UOC, Warden Galbreth, and Deputy Warden Givaudin. And my apologies if I missed anyone else in the audience. I'm trying to keep up with you as you come in. And with that, Mr. Presbury, will you and whoever you would like to bring with you come forward, please?
Honor guard, attention, shoot!
Whereas Richard Presbury was born on December 12, 1940, and grew up in Darlington, Maryland, he entered the Central Consolidated School, which is now the site of Hickory Elementary School. He married his wife Dorothy in 1959. They have three children, two daughters and a son. And whereas in 1970, Mr. Presbury joined the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company and became the first African-American fireman in the company and across Harford County. He quickly became a highly valued member of the company, earning EMS Person of the Year in 1971. Just a year after he joined, he also earned Firefighter of the Year in 1974 and the Unsung Hero Award in 2000. Richard held numerous officer positions throughout the company and was inducted into the Harford Cecil Firefighter Hall of Fame in 2002. In his 54 years of service with Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company, Mr. Presbury responded to more than 35,000 calls for service in Bel Air and across the county. And whereas, in addition to his commitment to the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company, Mr. Presbury and his wife also served the community through their church, Ames United Methodist in Bel Air, Maryland. They give back to those less fortunate through serving meals during the holidays and providing families with Christmas gifts. And whereas in 2021, Mr. Presbury was named as a hometown hero by the Baltimore Ravens, this recognition honors everyday heroes who are making positive contributions to communities. Mr. Presbury was invited by the team to share his story of his service, commitment, and dedication to the community of Bel Air and Harford County. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 19th day of November 2024, do hereby proclaim Richard Presbury a Harford Living Treasure, and it be further known that his lifetime experience and contributions to the Harford County community will provide a permanent record which shall recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Harford County, and that his memories and history will be recorded by the Harford County Public Library. Oral historian will become part of the oral history collection of the library.
Sir Richard, I'm not going to speak. I just happen to be up here because there are a lot of other people that I think are there are more people here that are more important to speak to you and speak to your presence in the fire department, in the county, and in the town of Bel Air. But I'm going to start with the governor's representative. Oh, that's going to be a pump. That's okay. There you go. That's close enough.
The mic.
Thank you. Yeah, I was at the wrong building. Sorry about that. Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. All right. So on behalf of the State of Maryland and Governor Wes Moore, this is a citation from Governor of the State of Maryland to Richard Presbury, Harford Living Treasure. Greetings. Be it known because of your demonstration of high integrity and ability, meriting our great trust and respect, we are most pleased to award you the governor's citation in appreciation of your outstanding services to the citizens of this state. And this is given with the great seal of the State of Maryland this 19th day of November 2024. Thank you and congratulations.
Before you get mad at me, Ricky Davis is the one that told him about this. Mayor, would you like to come forward? And Commissioners, please?
So on behalf of the town of Bel Air, we're presenting a certificate of recognition to Mr. Richard Presbury. Whereas Richard Presbury, a longtime and valued citizen of the town of Bel Air, has selflessly dedicated his time and talents to serving his community through his decades of volunteerism with the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company and his contributions to the fire company where he is recognized as an all-time top responder from 1971 through 1995 and from 2000 through 2024, responding to 39,550 calls for service. And whereas during that time, he participated in hundreds of hours of specialized training in firefighting and emergency medical services, subsequently holding leadership positions in fire and EMS, as well as taking on additional responsibilities by serving on numerous committees, all while continuing to embody the spirit of service and camaraderie, as evidenced by his statement, "The people are so great that I work around, I just keep doing it." And whereas Richard Presbury has been honored as a Harford County Living Treasure, a distinction recognizing his significant contributions to the county's rich cultural and social history and ensuring that his legacy is preserved as part of the Harford County Public Library's Living Treasures Oral History Project. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners hereby recognizes and commends Richard Presbury for his extraordinary service to the town of Bel Air and Harford County. The town of Bel Air congratulates him on being named a Harford County Living Treasure and expresses heartfelt gratitude for his lifelong dedication to making our community a better place. Thank you so much for your service, and how lucky are we that you left Darlington and moved to the town?
Mr. Bennett, can you step this way just a tad, please? Thank you. And Mr. Riley, you as well. Great. Thank you so much.
It's my honor to double today for Senator Jason Galian, and on behalf of the Senate of Maryland, we offer this official citation to Richard Presbury. Be it hereby known to all that the sincerest congratulations are offered to Richard Presbury in recognition of being recognized as a Harford County Living Treasure. Thank you for your significant contributions to Harford County. We wish you the best in all your future endeavors. Presented on this 19th day of November 2024 by the Harford County Senate Delegation.
Wow. Mr. Presbury, after reading your bio, I am extremely proud to give you this official citation and my fellow delegates here this evening. And we have six of us, so some of us couldn't make it tonight, but we are like 50%. So that's all good. So on behalf of the Maryland General Assembly and the House delegation, we want to present you with this official citation. Be it hereby known to all that sincerest congratulations are offered to Richard Presbury in recognition of your dedication as a Harford Living Treasure that honors your 54 years of hard work and dedication to the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company. The Harford County delegation is pleased to congratulate you on this commemorable honor, and it is quite an honor, so you should be very, very proud. So congratulations, and I'll let my fellow colleagues, if they want to say, okay? No? We're going to let you hold it.
This citation is presented to Richard Presbury in celebration of your being named a Harford Living Treasure by the Harford County Council, with appreciation for your 54 years of distinguished service to the Bel Air Volunteer Fire Company, and with deep admiration and respect to your courage and dedication in shattering barriers to become Harford County's first African-American volunteer firefighter, and with gratitude for all you have done to protect the lives of others, Chris Van Hollen, United States Senator, on this day, the 19th of November 2024.
Well, good evening. Good evening, everyone. I wasn't expected to speak tonight. I didn't know I was Senator Van Hollen, but listen, it takes a lot. I was just thinking in the back, I wasn't expected, I wasn't expecting to speak, but just service to your community and then also just nurturing your craft over those, over these years is commendable. This is, I was part of the council from 2018 to 2022, and this is the, this is my favorite part of being on the council, is doing a Harford Living Treasure. And you are well-deserving of this, so thank you for your commitment, your dedication to the community, and we look forward to seeing you do great things in the future. Thank you.
Sir Richard, I asked your colleagues at the fire department who was going to speak, and they all looked at one another. You know what I mean? They were all like, I don't know, but Eddie Hopkins is going to come forward, Eddie. And at the same time, any other chief, deputy chiefs, anybody that wants to come forward or speak, please come forward. Absolutely. Rick? Mr. Gallagher? Scotty?
So I was asked to represent the fire company and tell you a little bit about Richard, so if you'll bear with me, we'll start in 1971. No? No, in all seriousness, I've had the pleasure of knowing Richard probably a little less longer than Dorothy and his kids. Richard and I go back all 54 years. He was close personal friends with my dad and close personal friends with me. One of the hallmarks of Richard, which told me as a young man he was destined for greatness, if you recall, there's been a lot of mention tonight about Richard being the first African-American to serve in the volunteer fire service in the county. If you look at 1971, we're on the heels of the Civil Rights Movement. And when you look at the Civil Rights Movement, not quite, it still wasn't quite across the country accepted for African-Americans to be part of us, and that's sad. And I know stories my dad told me of prejudice and hate, even when people were calling for help, the fact that they would not want Mr. Presbury to come in their home because of his color. And I can almost sit here and cry now because that's hurtful. But you know what? This man right here never let prejudice, never let hate, never let judgment dissuade him from doing his job. He had a way about him of calming a situation where people would accept him and allow him to treat the patient. And that's harsh to say, allow him to and accept him to treat the patient. How harsh does that sound in today's society? But when you look back, when I look back, over the 54 years I've known Richard, I look at someone who I can emulate, and one to emulate is a young man. Richard has carried those ideals and his compassion and his passion for the service for the last 54 years in the fire service. And every one of the members of the fire service who is here tonight has had some sort of interaction with Richard over these many, many years. And I think anyone else could stand up here with a microphone and say the same exact thing I'm thinking, is that we are so blessed to have someone like Richard, who is so kind, so compassionate, to have his family, Dorothy, Christine, Charlene, and Richie, who also supported him in those endeavors. You know, it takes a family to make a true volunteer succeed in this, and he had the support of his family. And if you look deeply into his family, you see the same level of compassion in his family that Richard has. So husband and wife, father, mother, the examples they set for the children, the example they set for us is just, it's just, it's just absolutely amazing. So Richard has given us a lifelong history. We've had him, he comes, still comes in for every call, even for those of us who are tired in the middle of the night. You can look and Richard is coming in for all those calls at 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, all those, you know, what we call smells and bells calls. He comes in for them. He represents, and he's been a representative of our fire company for decades. Richard, we are proud. Everyone here is proud to know you. We're proud to associate with you. We're proud to be on the pipe with you. We were proud to be in the back of the enamels with you. We're just damn proud of you. So congratulations.
Did a drop mic.
Supposed to have a short guy in front of me.
Oh, I turned it off. I turned it off, right?
So I'm on my 41st year with the Harford County Government, and so I've known Richard my entire career with the county. And when we talk about volunteers in the community, I don't want to take anything away from anybody that volunteers for anything in the community, but when you decide to volunteer with a volunteer fire company, that starts almost the second job. And the training that's required and to listen to how many responses Richard has responded to in over his 50 years, I think that takes volunteer to a whole different level. And I think as we go through life, I think the biggest honor any of us can have is did we make our community and our country a better place? And I think everybody can be rest assured that Richard Presbury has made our community a better place. Like I said, I've known Richard for 41 years, and I'm not just saying this because I'm standing next to him now, but I've never heard one person say anything bad about this man in the 41 years I've known him. So Richard, I can't congratulate you enough, and thank you so much for what you did for the citizens of our county.
Richard, on the behalf of the, on behalf of the Fire and EMS Association, we'd just like to congratulate you for your 54 years of service and present you with this certificate.
No. I mean, counsel people just take turn on one.
If I may, if anyone in the audience wants to speak, family, church family, any other firefighters, while he's here, because I'm sure I didn't catch everybody, but it sounds like we're good, looks like we're good. Richard? Richard?
Congratulations. We appreciate that.
So, Richard, why don't you say a few words?
Faced? Oh, okay. I just want to thank everybody that come out here, and I've been very blessed to be doing what I've been doing, and I wouldn't trade it for anything. And all my firefighters, ladies, gentlemen, EMS, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a pleasure, and I'm just blessed to be here, and thank you for everything.
Yeah.
And if I may, I'd like to take a short recess. Thank you. We're going to move to Agenda Number Six, Special Presentations. We have our outside auditors, Clifton Larson Allen with us this evening. Mr. Early, good to see you. I'm sorry you had to wait so long, but I appreciate your patience whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thank you. I'll gladly wait through that any night. Quite a service commitment he has made.
Yes.
Congratulations to him. So, before you, you have a presentation I'm going to walk through of the annual comprehensive annual financial report audit conducted for the year ended June 30, 2024. These financial statements are the responsibility of the Department of Treasury for the county. We, as the auditors, issue our audit opinion, so I'll go through what kind of opinion you received in the financial statements, and then a couple of governor's communications that I'm required to go over with you as governance of the council, so. Okay? I'll slide over here a little bit. So, again, my name is Bill Early. I'm a principal at CLA. I work in our state and local government services team. We're located in Simonia, Maryland. Assistant with me was Alex Walther. She was the director. She's been here before, along with Christina Lowe as our senior, and other staff from our government services team. I'm going to go through the audit scope, the opinions, a little bit of government auditing standards that are going to be applicable moving forward, and then answer any questions you all may have. So, the audit scope, we audited the county's financial statements as of June 30, 2024, and the 911 trust fund for the county. We also are in the process of completing our single audit, which is the audit of the federal awards, and then filing of the data collection form with the federal government. We issue our report of internal control over reporting and compliance, letters that are charged with governance, which is the council. We also do an agreed upon procedures of the landfill, and we also certify the uniform financial report, and then last but not least, we do what's called a reexmission for the Housing Department to the federal government. This year, for our single audit, we are in the process of auditing two major programs, as you see there. Again, each year they rotate. 21.027 is the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund that is deemed to be audited by the federal government as a high-risk program. So, when you hear a say then, when you see our report, it's not high-risk necessarily because of the county, it's just high-risk deemed by the federal government. Our single audit report is in process. We're currently waiting for one or two items. We'll get that finished up, and then we'll go through our QC review process. We should have that issued by the end of the year. As far as the financial statement audit, we have issued an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance we as auditors can give on a set of financial statements. We noted no material weaknesses and no significant efficiencies noted in that financial statement audit. As I mentioned, the federal awards audit is in process. We will be drafting any findings that we have and reporting those to management to get their response, and then they will be reported to the federal government as well. Required communication, I am saying that we did perform our audit in accordance with what is known as government auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards. The purpose is to obtain reasonable and not absolute assurance about whether the financial statements are free from any material misstatements. We do assess the accounting principles used and any significant estimates used by management. If you do read the annual comprehensive financial report, it is several hundred pages long, so there's a lot of information in there. I know that's a lot to ask you to read, so there's a section called the Management Discussion Analysis, which compares year-to-year activity. So, if you can take a moment and read the 10 pages there, that will give you a very, it's like a synopsis, the Cliff Notes version of some of the information presented. And then we do evaluate the overall financial presentation of the financial statements. Again, as I mentioned, we had an unmodified opinion. The significant accounting procedures are noted in Note 1 of that annual comprehensive financial report that I mentioned. The estimates that we did test, again, just because of their significance, and we test estimates, we make sure they're reasonable, considered industry standards, and based on historical information. Those were in curve and I reported claims, fair value of investments, pension liabilities, OPEB liabilities, and the landfill your cost and related amounts. We noted no significant uncorrected misstatements. We had no uncorrected misstatements that management knew about or that we found during our audit. We had no disagreements with management over any accounting policies or procedures. Management was very cooperative and professional during the audit process. They've been through this for several years. We have a very strong Treasury's Office team that knows what they have to provide us and provides it very timely. I will note that you are one of the first counties in the state that issues the annual financial report consistently year after year. Management did not consult with any other accountants that they've told us about the application of any accounting procedures, and there was no major issues discussed with management prior to us being selected as the auditors, as we are prepared through a contract through Crystal's office. Accounting standards that are coming up that we'll be working with Treasury to implement, so you'll hear more about these in future years. There was one this year, however, it was not impactful to the county, as you did not have any correct and misstatements. Going forward, we'll have what's known as compensated absences. You currently record those, just little tweaks in how they may be recorded or change in how the estimate is done. So, we'll be working with Robbie and Rick implementing those. Certain disclosures, risk disclosures that you'll have coming up in your financial statements, these again will not be dollar amounts, but more wording in the financial statements to say, hey, to alert any readers, buyers, rating agencies, if there is any, something such as significant employer that would be leaving the market or anything like that, we'd have to evaluate that if it needed to be disclosed in the financial statements. They're also changing a little bit the financial reporting model. This one's just come out, so everybody's going through the process of evaluating what impact it will have. It's more to develop some consistency among governments and how they report certain transactions. Again, also, recently we've talked about how leases are now on your books as far as subscription information technology assets. Those will have to be evaluated. They kind of are issuing some standards to clean up how they came out with those. With that said, I will go over any questions that you all may have.
Thanks, Bill, and please thank Alex Forrest again, too. Appreciate the time she spent with you today, and thanks for answering the questions that I had earlier. Counsel, Mr. Pennman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, I appreciate you and Alex sitting down and answering questions, not only for myself, but my citizen budget advisor, Brooke Schertz. Ms. Brooks, thank you for being there as well. There was a number of questions that you knew the answer to that, you know, made us feel a little better, and that we're getting some more information as well. So, I look forward to some of that information coming forward. Great job, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Mr. Riley?
Yes, Bill, when you talk about the single audit expenditures of federal awards, is that every federal award that we get in the county, is that what you're looking at?
So, that is what gets reported on that schedule of federal awards. We then go through an evaluation process based on what the federal government tells us, how many programs we have to test, how frequently they have to be tested, and those are the two that popped up this year to be tested. There are others that we would not look at.
You would not look at?
No.
And so, you bounce back and forth on which ones you decide to pick every year?
The federal government has strict guidelines and a uniform guidance about how often certain programs have to be picked and a risk rating procedure. So, if like one of them had a material weakness this year, it would be a higher-risk program. Again, next year, we have to retest it next year.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none. Bill, we thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And again, thanks for your patience today.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Number Seven, Approval of Minutes, public hearing November 12, 2024, legislative date 24-29, November 12, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being none, the corrections, or excuse me, the minutes stand approved? Counsel, if there are no objections, I'd like to move Resolution 02024 through 03824 together.
Oh, no objections.
Thank you. Mr. Janjordano, may I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve Resolution 020-24 through 038-24.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's moved in second to approve a Resolution 02024 through 03824. Is there any discussion? Mr. Janjordano?
I'd just like to thank Jen Wilson, and I know Bill Amos had worked on this, and all the people that worked on the improved version of this to put all these properties in ag preservation. So, it's quite a list, and so, a little bit of mixed, some mixed use in here that we hadn't had in the past, being on the council, so just want to say thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative and one vacant, Resolution 02024 through 03824 are hereby approved. Mr. Janjordano, please read Bill 24-39, oh, 39, into the record.
Bill 24-039, Chapter 157 fees as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincentia Cresta, the county executive. Emergency act to repeal and reenact with amendments, Section 157-3, applications for license contents, fees of Article 1, general provisions to repeal and reenact with amendments, Section 157-16, building permits to repeal and reenact with amendments, Section 157-17, plumbing permits, both of Article 2, fees, all of Chapter 157, license and permits of the Hartford County Code as amended, to include a partial refund for fees associated with building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical permits when such permit is disapproved or withdrawn prior to the issuance. To lower the application fee associated with new residential construction, in certain circumstances, to clarify building permit fees associated with re-roofing certain structures to increase fees associated with issuing a written notice of violation, working without a valid license or permit, and issuing a stop work order in certain circumstances to clarify that installing new plumbing fixtures includes reconstruction in addition to existing plumbing fixtures, in certain circumstances to clarify which fees exclusively pertain to commercial utilities, in certain circumstances to reorganize the plumbing fee schedule for clarity, and generally relating to permits and fees in Hartford County, Maryland, public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, December 17, 2024, at 7:00 PM in these council chambers.
Thank you. Introduction and consideration of amendments 1 through 6 to Bill 24-033, impact fees will definitely be considered this evening. So, may I have a motion on those amendments, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve Amendments 1 to 6 on Bill 24-33.
May I have a second?
033.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. It's been moved in second to approve Amendments 1 through 6 to Bill 24-033, and under discussion, if I may, Amendments 1, 2, and 3. These three amendments are removing the ability for the Treasury to implement and act on rules and regulations to administer and enforce the entire Finance Chapter, Chapter 1, 2, 3 of the code without having to come to council for any oversight. A portion of these amendments also go with Amendment Number 5 by revising the title page to include the additional revisions to Section 123-55 regarding the current report from Tischler Buys Incorporated dated September 10, 2024. Amendment Number 4, this amendment is necessary to clarify that the amount of the escalator will be based on a percentage increase in the state construction costs, which include building construction and site development per square foot for the previous fiscal year pursuant to the Maryland intricacy, inter-agency commission on school construction. Amendment Number 5, this amendment is necessary to reference the correct most recent report prepared by Tischler Buys Incorporated dated September 10, 2024, and to remove the reference to the old report dated December 2, 2004. Amendment 6, this amendment is setting forth that the effective date of the bill will be March 1, 2025. This was discussed and requested by IT and the administration to allow at time to revise and model the software so that it can properly invoice the appropriate fees. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Dixon?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bennett?
I just wanted to add to that. I think that was a very comprehensive coverage of that. I know we've gotten a few emails that have said to pass this with no amendments, but just to be abundantly clear, these six amendments are clerical and only confirming the original purpose of the legislation, and we got an email today from the county executive himself encouraging us to pass these first six amendments, which are important just to clarify the intended purpose of the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative and one absent, Amendments 1 through 6 to Bill 24-033 are hereby approved. Mr. Janjordano, please read Amendment Number 7 to Bill 24-033 into the record.
Amendment 7, Bill 24-033, impact fees introduced by Council Member Boyle Sodles. Amendment Number 7 on Page 5, in Line 19, strike 5, and substitute 25.
Thank you. 11, call for final reading of bills, we have none. Enrollment of bills, number 12, we have none. 13, unfinished business, we have none. 14, new business, council request for outside counsel. The council, if I may, the council has reasonable belief that a lawsuit is forthcoming due to the removal by operation of law of Mr. Guthrie from his elected office. Based upon this letter to council and comments in the media, we are seeking to retain the law firm of Rifkin Wiener Livingston LLC. Council has an established relationship with this firm and have full confidence in their ability to represent the council on all of its, and all of its members. May I have a motion, please?
Counsel President, I move to approve the retention of Rifkin Wiener Livingston LLC as outside counsel.
It's Livingston.
Okay.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved in second to approve outside counsel. Is there any discussion, any further? Mr. Riley?
Yes, I've never seen any letter from Mr. Guthrie. It's never came to my desk, and if it has, I don't know where it is. I'm going to oppose this. I don't understand why we're getting outside counsel when we haven't even been sued. I think it's just a blank check. It never came to my desk, and if it has, I don't know where it is. I'm going to oppose this. I don't understand why we're getting outside counsel when we haven't even been sued. I think it's just a blank check for this counsel, and I would, I would hope that my other colleagues could turn it down. I'm sure it's going to pass, but I would hope that you turn it down. We don't need a blank check for outside counsel when we aren't even being sued. Thank you.
Respectfully, Mr. Riley, I believe that email's in your personal email, same as it was for everyone else. Check if you get a chance. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Pennman.
Aye.
Mr. Janjordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being five votes in affirmative, one negative, and one vacant, the request for outside counsel is hereby approved.
Okay. Counsel President, if I can just clarify for the record, the Councilman Guthrie did email my council email, not my personal email, which I don't use to communicate for council business, and just want to be clear about that, you know, that councilman, and I, I think it's because I've told Councilman Guthrie many times to never email my personal email, to only use my council email. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Agenda Number 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have three this evening.
We've gone past that. I'm sorry?
We have three this evening.
Okay.
Samantha Potts, followed by Lee Maddox.
Okay. Ms. Potts?
I believe she's.
I do not see her in the audience.
Yep. Ms. Maddox? Name and address, please.
Good evening. Thank you for this podium. This is great. Much appreciated. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. Lee Maddox, 1700 Church Point Court, Perryman. As we approach Thanksgiving, a time to reflect on gratitude, I would take a moment to recognize Councilwoman Jacob Bennett, who represents District F. Councilwoman Bennett, you've shown unwavering dedication to our community, not only as a kindergarten teacher shaping young minds, but also as a leader standing strong for Perryman. This past week was especially stressful for those of us in Perryman, but you remained steadfast. I also want to extend my thanks to your legislative assistant, Heather Kantos. Heather, your dedication and support have not gone unnoticed. Jacob, the work of your office and the support of your fellow council members ensured that our voices were heard. I want to express my gratitude not just to you, but also to the council members who stood with you during this time. Your collective efforts truly highlight the power of unity and collaboration. As we give thanks this season, I'm reminded how fortunate we are to have leaders like you all, who care deeply about both the present and the future of our community. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brianna Coleman.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Brianna Coleman, 2347 Engle Road in Foston. You must, it must be Thanksgiving season, because I too wanted to thank my councilman, Mr. Pennman from District B, for having an open conversation with me last week about the impact fee bill. I attended my first comprehensive rezoning hearing last night, and since it was my first one, I have nothing to compare it to, but there were over 75 speakers, and it went well past my bedtime. The Planning Advisory Board is truly a dedicated group of volunteers, and I wanted to thank them for listening last night and in the previous sessions. I was happy to see Councilman Pennman and Councilwoman Boyle Sodles in attendance for about 30 minutes. There were 66 applications, which they said is very low compared to previous years. As we head into another round of budget talks, we are hearing the same things over and over. There will be devastating cuts to all services in this county and cuts we truly cannot afford if we want to maintain any standard of living. I hope to see everyone proactively engaging and having conversations that produce solutions instead of continued finger pointing. I'd like to see options incentivizing redevelopment for residential and commercial properties rather than banking on rezoning properties to add more residents when our county's current income structure does not support its residents' basic needs. Thank you all for listening, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Number 16, business from council members. Mr. Janjordano.
Thank you, Counsel President. Yesterday, my legislative aide, Joanne, attended the Planning Advisory Board meeting at Belair High School. I'd been homesick since Thursday and struggling here tonight, as some of you probably have noticed, so down about 10 pounds, haven't eaten for a couple of days. There was, as Brianna said, there were 75 individuals that got up to speak, which is relatively low, and we have a two or three, I think three in Bel Air, so. And then want to just notice there's some upcoming events in the town of Bel Air. Saturday, November 30, Small Business Saturday. Saturday, November 30, it's the Bel Air Holiday Market. And Sunday, December 8, is my favorite parade. It's the Bel Air Christmas Parade, and that starts at 3 o'clock and starts right next to Das Bierall, comes out, so come out. And then also, the Train Garden Did Find a Home, and it's going to be at the Arafat Lodge in Bel Air, so make sure you visit that. They had 12,000 visitors last year. That's all I have. Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano. Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Mr. Riley?
Yes, just a couple of things. Harford County Farm Bureau, bankroll on Friday night. Congratulations to Dave Dorn, Farmer of the Year, and his, his whole family, Mike, they just live right behind me. Also, Bill Amos received a service to Harford County Agriculture Award for all his years of service, so congratulations to you, Bill, and Dave. And Miley, if I could be added to Councilwoman Boyle Sodles Amendment 7 on Bill 24 oh thirty-three, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you for your support, Councilwoman Riley. Last night, I did attend the Comprehensive Rezoning Public Hearing at Bel Air High School. Unfortunately, I wasn't allowed to stay the entire time. I had to get home to my kids, but my aide was able to attend the entire Comprehensive Rezoning meeting that took place in Aberdeen, which was also very informative. Friday, November 29, at Lido's Field at Rifkin Stadium, and there will be partnering with Visit Harford and hosting Harford holidays with festive light displays, mores making, sleigh rides, and I hope to be there with my kids. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and remind you of supporting the local small businesses in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. First, I do just want to take a moment to recognize the life of Ms. Cammie Murphy, who is an icon to the Havity Grace community, who we lost this past week. She was the daughter of Cad Coway, you know, jazz legend, but beyond that, she was a lifelong educator, committed to honoring, recognizing history, supporting the arts, a member of Abbey and I's local church, St. John's, always giving back, you know, a huge, huge loss to our community, somebody, but thankfully, who there's a lot of archival footage of and interviews of, so if you want to learn more about Cammie, you know, look her name up on, on YouTube, and there's a ton of interview footage of her speaking about her life and her family and her father, which is a real treat, but I know a lot of people are missing Cammie right now. This past week, I attended the Charlie Riley Scholarship Award Ceremony, which was a great event. Council President and I were there together, and it was great to honor so many young people who are just so encouraging to, to see what they're up to and what their future lies ahead. I also attended our Abington, Bellcamp, Perryman cab meeting, and that was a really great opportunity to interface with the community, speak about legislation we're working on and legislation we have coming up. And upcoming, we have the Susquehanna Hose Company Rededication Open House on Juniata Street from 12 to 2 on Saturday, which is a great opportunity to see the, the new fire station that just got wrapped up on construction. There's the Oyster Fest happening at the Star Center at 6:00 PM, which a portion of your tickets goes to a local organization of your choice from a list, and you can choose Havity Grace dancers, Parks and Rec dancers. Beyond that, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and remind you, as you get ready for holiday shopping, that our local shops and businesses are still open and still here and, and need your support, you know. Plus, nobody ever said that Amazon box looks good underneath a Christmas tree, so, you know, buy local. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We'll move to 15, business from the Council President. I want to advertise our adequate public facility meetings. Will be open to the public December 9, 6:00 PM, up in the council's second floor conference room. We'll be sending a notice out to the committee members. Also, Ms. Kantos and I, representing Mr. Bennett, were able to attend the adoption ceremony at the ceremonial courtroom for National Adoption Month, and absolutely very moving, and was honored to be there and honored to speak to the family. Had several meetings this week with several different people, Dr. Felder, Dr. Bolson, Chamber Legislative Committee, and several others, several different other events, but this week, November 17 through the 23, we are recognizing National Apprenticeship Week, and it's the 10th anniversary of their program. Maryland has more than 12,000 active registered apprentices and more than 200 active programs. Want to thank all of those companies and organizations who are providing these opportunities and programs for the interested individuals, and with that, I'd also want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pennman.
Can I have an opportunity to speak?
I thought you spoke.
I know, it's a little light over here.
Real quick, real quick. Real quick.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Aaron, I thought you were laughing about my Amazon box joke, but it was because we skipped you.
All right. I just want to just discuss, just quickly, quickly, the economic picture for the state. Maryland is facing a $1 billion gap this year, $2.7 billion deficit for the fiscal year 2026, and $6 billion over the next five years. One of the major reasons is the stagnant revenue, meaning slowing of new businesses and residents within our state. State Leaders, which was published in a Maryland Matters article, said everything is on the table and will consider altering revenue policies. That means possibly increased taxes, sales tax, property tax, income taxes, and yes, those taxes called fees as well. I was happy to see the county executive mentioned that he wants to grow our economy, become independent of federal and state help, so I look forward to seeing that. And I could tell you, one thing that I vision, that I hope will not be rated, is the Local Reserve Fund. The Local Reserve Fund for the state of Maryland has over $2.5 billion in there, and 140 million of it is Harford County. The state of Maryland collects taxes and then disperses them to the individual counties, and they have $140 million of Harford County money. So that could go a long way in Harford County. I think we need to, as a council, I think our local legislators on the state side should be advocating to push the state to bring that money back. Last year, if you recall, the comptroller came and sat right there, and she says, "You get all your money back." Well, we're not getting all of our money back, and I tell you, this fund, the Local Reserve Fund, was rated to, for over a billion dollars under the O'Malley administration, so if you think it can't happen again, it can very well happen again. So I look forward to joining my colleagues on the council and our other state partners in advocating to bring our 140 million dollars back to Harford County. And with that, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
And, Mr. Pennman, I'm glad you got a chance to bring that back up, because I forgot that. It is an alarming number.
It's alarming number.
Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting.